Good evening. It is five thirty P M on Tuesday, March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, eleven twenty-three West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Chairman John Hastings presiding. Also present are Commissioners Grant Simmons, Slate Camp, Amelia Boyd attending remotely, Ben McRan, and welcome to our newest Commissioner, Wayne Benner. Glad you could join us. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance if you will all stand. Thank you. I'll make a quick announcement, too, for those in the attendance here. There are listening devices. If you need anything, let us know, and we can provide them if that would assist. Any general announcements from Commissioners? Any general announcements from staff? Then we're probably good to go. Our first order of business is approval of the minutes from our last meeting. And if you've had a chance to look at them, I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes from the February twenty-first meeting. And second?
Second.
All in favor? I?
I.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
abstained since I was.
Yes, exactly. Yep, you bet. Okay, so we pass. All right. Next item is a public hearing for a rezoning request. The first item is this request to rezone property at seven ten and seven fourteen Pine Street and one oh one and one oh three North Boyer Avenue. Parcels IDed as RPS zero five zero 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 five four zero two two A A and RPS zero five zero 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 five four zero one eight A A and RPS zero five zero 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 five four zero one five A A and legally described as lots fifteen to twenty-four of block fifty-four of the West End Edition E, Section twenty-two Township fifty-seven North Range to West. Records of Bonner County, Idaho, from commercial C to mixed-use residential M U R. A notice of public hearing was published in the Bonner County Daily B, the city's newspaper of record, on February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The order and procedure for the public hearing this evening will be as follows: An explanation of the subject of the public hearing by city staff. Presentation by the applicant, and please note that Commissioners should address their questions to the applicant at that time. Opening of the public hearing, at which time the public may provide testimony. Questions should be asked of those testifying at the time. The order for those providing testimony will be as follows: In favor, then neutral, and finally opposed. Applicant's rebuttal testimony, at which time final questions may be asked of the applicant. Please note that if new facts are elicited during rebuttal, the public will be given an opportunity to comment on any new facts. Then we will close the public hearing and the commission will deliberate. No new information may be provided after the hearing has been closed with questions directed only to city staff during deliberations. Before I proceed any further, I would like to ask for confirmation from each Commissioner. Please that you have had no ex parte contact and have no conflict of interest as pertains to this request. Commissioner Benner?
No.
Commissioner McRan?
No.
I do not either. Commissioner Camp?
No.
And? Mr. Simmons?
None.
No, thank you. And I will now. Oh, I'm sorry. I said forgot. I'm so sorry. My apologies. Good. Thank you for speaking out. Thank you for speaking out. I'm going down the line here, you know?
I got you, John. No worries.
Chime in anytime. Then I will now yield the floor to Associate Planner Sarah Gilmore for an introduction of this request and explanation of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So tonight, we are giving a presentation for a rezoning request at one oh one and one oh three North Boyer Avenue and seven ten and seven fourteen Pine Street. So to begin, I wanted to give a little bit of background and give you an idea of how we came to this public hearing. So in September of two thousand and twenty-one, staff began talking with the applicant, specifically the property owner of one oh one North Boyer Avenue. The property owner had expressed interest in converting the structure at this address to a single-family dwelling. Staff had communicated at that time that the current zoning, commercial C, did not permit single-family dwellings. So conversion was not possible under that zone. In April of two thousand and twenty-two, last year, a pre-application request was submitted by the property owner to discuss options for allowing the structure to have a legal occupancy as a single-family dwelling. Upon receiving that request, we did schedule a pre-application meeting with the property owner. Issues that were discussed: First, that a use variance could not be granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Second, that a request to rezone the property to residential, single-family zoning would not be supported by the comprehensive plan. Third, that a rezone to another commercial district that would allow single-family residential could be considered, if consistent with the comprehensive plan designation for that site, which is context area four. And then fourth, that a single parcel rezone request would be considered spot zoning, that the adjacent property owners should be contacted to see if they would want to be included in a request to rezone. Then in February of two thousand and twenty-three, just last month, we did receive a complete application that was for a request to rezone lots fifteen through twenty-four of block fifty-four of West End Edition E from commercial C to mixed-use residential, which brings us to the public hearing before you. So this request is to rezone ten lots fifteen fifteen through twenty-four, which is across three parcels, totaling approximately twenty-seven thousand five hundred square feet or point six three acres from commercial C to mixed-use residential, which is also a commercial zoning district. The existing uses on site include a commercial building, single-family dwellings, and a building historically used as a church. So the images provided on the screen, the first image on top is a satellite view of the property with the boundary of those ten lots delineated with the red line. And then the screenshot below is from the original plot, just showing block fifty-four of the West End Edition E with those ten original plotted lots. The stated intent for the rezone from the applicant is to allow for existing non-conforming uses to become conforming, specifically single-family dwellings on site, to allow for existing structures to change their occupancy to single-family residential, and to allow the conversion of existing structures to uses that require less off-street parking than commercial uses. So tonight, the required findings of the commission include, first, whether or not the proposed zone change from commercial C to mixed-use residential is in conformance with the future land use map and other policies within the comprehensive plan. And then, second, whether or not the proposed mixed-use residential zone is consistent and compatible with the existing zoning and future land use uses in the vicinity of the site. So first, I wanted to address kind of the comprehensive plan. Future land use map, the image here shows the context areas of the parcel itself or the properties itself, which again are delineated by that red line. The burgundy color does show that these ten lots are a context area four within the comprehensive plan. Context area four emphasizes two- and three-story mixed-use and attached townhome-style residences and is intended as vibrant secondary centers of commercial office and residential development, serving as neighborhood hubs for residents in neighboring context area three and context area two districts. On this map, you can see, in addition to context area four designations, there's also context area three to the east on the next block or on the west, excuse me, on the next block, and context area two is directly north across the alley. Then to address the zoning, the current zoning is commercial C, which on this map is represented by the dark green color. So you can see the property delineated in the red boundary. Again, commercial C is the zoning. The ten of the commercial C zone represents a lower-intensity commercial area, serving adjacent neighborhoods and residents and preserving the scale of the built environment by restricting height limits. And then surrounding zoning on this map, you can see there's residential, single-family directly north across the alley. There's additional commercial C zoning directly south across Pine Street, and then commercial A zoning to the west across North Boyer Avenue. And then commercial C zoning is also directly to the west. The last two lots on the block are commercial C as well. The rezone request is proposing to be zoned to mixed-use residential. The mixed-use residential zoning district provisions represent a commercial zoning classification that permits, rather than mandates, a vertical mix of low-intensity commercial and residential uses within the same building and is intended to accommodate a physical pattern of development often found along village main streets and in neighborhood commercial areas of older cities. So to give the commission an idea of the differences between the mixed-use residential zone and commercial, we put together this table to remember the development standard differences. So the maximum front yard setback for the mixed-use residential zone is ten feet, or it can be increased to twenty feet if you incorporate civic space. In the commercial C district, the maximum front yard setback is zero feet, or it can be increased to ten feet with civic space incorporated. The minimum side yard setback is zero for the mixed-use residential zone and also zero for commercial C. The minimum rear yard setback is again zero for mixed-use residential and zero for commercial C. Both districts have a specific setback from residential zones, which is important because the subject properties are just adjacent to a residential zone to the north across the alley. The setback from a residential zone for the mixed-use residential zoning district is the same as the abutting residential zone. So in this case, a five-foot side setback and a fifteen-foot rear setback would be required. And for the commercial C district, the setback from residential zones is ten feet, so a ten-foot buffer from any residential lot that it's abutting. The maximum lot coverage permitted in the mixed-use residential seventy percent for impervious surface, that includes the building footprint and any paving and concrete pervious surfaces. In the commercial C district, there is no maximum lot coverage.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? Am I allowed to ask a question?
Yes.
Just clarifying question on the maximum. Yes, thank you. The maximum lot coverage, is that building and parking, or is it just building?
Building and parking, including all impervious surfaces present on site. The height limits for the mixed-use residential zone, there is no minimum height limit or minimum height, but there is a maximum height limit of forty feet. For the commercial C district, there is a minimum height of two stories. So each building shall be constructed as two stories or shall be engineered to support a second story in the future. The maximum height is thirty-five. This thirty-five-foot height limit can be increased to forty-five feet if a hundred percent of the building includes residential uses above thirty-five feet. It can be increased to forty-five feet also if fifty-one percent of the required parking is incorporated into the structure, so the parking garage or some kind of underground parking. And then if it is, if any portion of the structure constructed in the commercial C zone is within fifty feet of a residential zone, that portion of the structure is required to stay at thirty-five feet. So this next slide is to present the differences in uses that are permitted or not permitted between the two zones. So, single-family dwellings in the mixed-use residential zone, they are permitted, but they are subject to the residential, single-family zone standards, so development standards. In the commercial C zone, single-family dwellings are not a permitted use. Multi-family dwellings in the mixed-use residential zone are permitted. Again, they're subject to the residential, multi-family zone standards. And then in the commercial C zone, multi-family dwellings are permitted. Banks, not to include a drive-through, they are permitted in the mixed-use residential zone but restricted to three thousand square feet. In the commercial C zone, they are permitted but without a size restriction. Offices for medical and dental uses are permitted in the mixed-use residential zone, but again restricted to three thousand square feet. Commercial C zone, they are permitted with no size restriction. Offices for professional service, administrative, and business purposes are again permitted in the mixed-use residential zone but restricted to three thousand square feet and are permitted in the commercial C zone, no size restriction. Restaurants in the mixed-use residential zone are permitted but restricted to sixty seats or less. In the commercial C zone, they're permitted without any seat restrictions. Retail sales similarly are permitted in the mixed-use residential zone but restricted to three thousand square feet. Permitted in the commercial C zone without restrictions on size. And grocery stores are also permitted in the mixed-use residential zone but restricted to three thousand square feet. Permitted in the commercial C zone but without any size restrictions.
I have a question before you progress on the slides. Would a, in the mixed-use residential, could a restaurant have a drive-through? I see they're prohibited on banks.
Great question. Drive-throughs are not permitted in.
At all.
Used residential.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, another question.
Yes.
Is, and are the businesses limited to just the first floor, or does it matter in a multi-use?
So the mixed-use residential.
Or, excuse me, thank you.
It does define a mixed-use structure as a commercial on the first story and residential.
Got you.
Solely on the second story. Believe it. Really differentiates that residential is completely on the second story.
Thank you.
So again, the required findings by the commission tonight: First, whether or not the proposed zone change from C to mixed-use residential is in conformance with the future land use map and other policies within the comprehensive plan. And second, whether or not the proposed mixed-use residential zone is consistent and compatible with existing zoning and future land uses in the vicinity of the site. So tonight, following public testimony and subsequent deliberations, the Planning and Zoning Commission may take one of the following actions in accordance with Sandpoint City Code Title nine-nine-nine A. One, to make a recommendation to the city council at the first available regular council meeting following the planning commission's hearing. The recommendation shall state specifically on what grounds or statute said recommendation is based. Or, second, to postpone the consideration of the application, fault with its advisors and staff to make a recommendation to the city council within forty days after such hearing. And that is all I have for you. Here is an image again of the ten lots, three parcels from above, showing the layout, the streets, the alley. Any question?
Commissioners.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um, Sarah, that I, since I haven't been there, kind of forgotten, but that little one in the middle, that's used to be the Pine Street Bakery, correct?
Correct.
And that's being converted into a single family dwelling, or I don't think there's a business in there currently, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I have a question, too. Do we know if the two lots not part of this rezone on that same block? Were they contacted, not interested, not needed? When you look at the map right there, there's, I would have guessed, by the way they're numbered, that they are lots thirteen and fourteen, because it went by. But we can see of all the lots on that block, two are not part of this rezone.
That may be a question for the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Sir Chair.
Uh, yes, Mr. McGrann.
So how does our our future changes to comprehensive plan and the future land use map play into this analysis? How should we take that into consideration?
Commissioner McGrann, that's an excellent question because we are in the process of updating the comprehensive plan. It's not adopted yet, but as we have been discussing, we actually are showing this area as neighborhood mixed use. So again, you need to just look at the current, but I would say the proposed or the existing uses are consistent with what we believe the new land, future land use map will indicate for this property.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, another.
Yes, Commissioner Simmons.
Mister, another newbie question, but how come a use variance wouldn't apply here? Is it just the scope of it is too much? Meaning?
A variance request is for dimensional standards.
Got it.
Can't approve.
Got it.
A use through a variance that's not allowed in a district.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One question on if the properties comply with the mixed-use residential setbacks.
What the question being to the existing?
Yeah, well, the existing, I'm assuming, fits for the zoning that it's in, but for the request to change, do the buildings on the property meet the M U R setbacks exceed, or are they good?
We don't actually have that information.
Okay.
If I may add, the only thing I would add is that the the proposed rezone is more restrictive than the current zone when it comes to that. So if they they're not in compliance, they would be allowed to exist, but if they did a remodel or a rebuild, they'd have to go to the more restrictive setbacks that we have now. If this will proceed.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff before we hear the applicant's presentation? No. Okay, thank you. So with that, I will yield the floor for the applicant's presentation. If the applicant's representative will please step to the podium and introduce yourself, and I believe you're remote. Is that correct?
Oh. Yeah, that's correct.
We can hear you. Yeah, you froze up.
Hear me okay?
Coming and going.
Oh, got it. Okay, yeah.
And the video is frozen, but that's okay. As long as we can hear you, that'll be great.
Let me see them. Okay, if you have any problem, just let me know. I'll see if I can move where I'm at to get a better signal. Um, I guess to answer, my name is John. Uh, applicant. Uh, my wife and I own one oh one and one oh three North Boyer Avenue. And I can answer that setback question. From Boyer Avenue to the front of the building, we have seventeen feet, so that's between the ten and twenty-foot setback for the front of the building. And then I think it was zero on the side. We combined to the building eleven branches as our setback. And then I believe rear was zero, but on the rear, we have twelve foot four to the property line. So we've been, we've been just kind of trying to navigate how to make this building work. It's kind of, it's really interesting, and we ran into some issues with it and understood there was a history with.
Excuse me.
Trying to start a kinder care in there and stuff like that.
I'm gonna interrupt.
Yeah, sure.
And that's because you're breaking up. We're not able to hear.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If we turn off.
Okay.
It'll probably help his audio. If you could kill your video, John, it'll probably help your audio. Just turn your video off.
Okay, can you hear me better now?
So far.
Can you, I can hear you now. Let me move. I'm sorry, guys. Is that any better? Can you hear me better?
It's still a little sketchy, but we'll proceed and see how it goes.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, so you know, my wife and I started down this road trying to figure out how we can, I guess, make this building work really well, and kind of the vision we saw for it, especially for the main building, was more as a residence versus a business, but you know, the space we've kind of recreated in here would suit either pretty well. And we've kind of been guided in this direction to pursue the mixed-use residential zoning and mostly because it maintains, as far as we can tell from understanding the comp plan, that it would still maintain a lot of the, like, pretty much everything in commercial C, but it would also allow for multi-family, single-family detached or townhouse residential housing, which that was really appealing to us. And we were given a church and Sixth Street across six from Evans Brothers. We've kind of seen the buildings there. They're definitely, well, as far as I can tell, residential structures, but there's that big building on the other side of the block that looked like it was an old church or something as well. Um, and then and then I guess in my response to, or in the application, the response to the question regarding B, changes to the existing area that justify our request for the change to mixed-use residential is really construction costs being extremely expensive, and we feel that having mixed-use residential zoning would allow this property to be versatile, like more versatile as we see it, and it can serve really well as single-family housing also, an area to operate a business, and it promotes the health and wellness with multimodal travel options to being close to downtown Sandpoint and also the Dover-Sandpoint Community Trail. And we figured that the cost to rebuild this building altogether at three hundred ninety-five dollars a foot, which is like a project we took on recently, and that's what our cost to build was, would be in the ballpark of one point five million to rebuild this corner, which is, I mean, to us, it's crazy expensive. I think anybody could agree with that. So we were thinking even it would, that offers a more affordable option for housing there versus you to create today, which is really expensive. And I'm just kind of going to read through my, I guess, my response. I don't know if you guys have all had the opportunity to read that, but I know it's a public forum, so hopefully it'll help understand a little bit where we're coming from, but I went through the, regarding item C in my response to my letter, was discussion regarding what comprehensive plan, land use designation goals or policies support our request to change from commercial C to mixed-use residential. And it said, please, please note that this property is designated as context area four of the comprehensive plan, future land use map. And I feel that the site is comprised of two existing properties, both in excellent condition, to provide a portal housing solution without additional costs to the current or future owners. And under current zoning, neither property, we feel that it doesn't conform to commercial C without substantial costs involved and the potential removal of one property entirely. And by that, I mean on our property at one oh one and one oh three North Boyer Avenue, eliminating the previous parish house, we call it the gray house because it's gray now. Eliminating that would free up off-street parking, but in just that building alone, to rebuild that building would be around four hundred and ten thousand dollars at the price of three hundred ninety-five dollars a foot. So I didn't necessarily feel that that was entirely efficient, or it's just, it feels kind of funky in trying to navigate getting parking and all the boxes checked for commercial C. Um, and then moving on to this outside of my responses to this letter, in reviewing the comprehensive plan, I've come across several examples that I believe support the zoning change we're requesting. And this is me just, you know, rereading my response that I sent to Sarah and Amy, part of my application, and I'm quoting the comp plan here, so starting on page three of the comp plan, under quote Idaho requirements in the Local Land Use Planning Act, end quote, item number one, quote, "to provide property rights while making accommodations for other necessary types of developments such as low-cost housing and mobile home parks," parks, end quote. And this, my response is, I believe that the request being submitted by us and the Stevenson's, who are, they're the Pine Street property owners, our neighbors. I believe it's in line with making an accommodation for other necessary types of developments such as low-cost housing, because our properties are great residential properties, even though they fall under commercial C zoning. If we were able to, if we were both to recreate our buildings on our properties, the cost would be astronomical and well beyond the definition of affordable housing. However, With the renovations we've both done to our properties, existing infrastructure, they both support item number six. Uh, quote, to encourage urban and urban type development within incorporated cities. Uh, end quote, the walkability of our property is very supportive to the comp plans efforts to reduce vehicular transportation with their proximity to amenities such as Winter Ridge, Evans Brothers. Matchwood, the Dover Sandpoint Community Trail, downtown Sandpoint and or stuff like the Third Street Pier are also pretty easily accessible. Um, by foot or bike. Um, from section two, under population forecast under on page two dash five of the comp plan, quote, the A C I forecast. Also presumes that people will be more attracted to the urban environment within the city limits, end quote. Um, my response is this is one of the main reasons that we were attracted to this property and its potential, and this is the comp plan predicting the future of Sam Point. We love and utilize the proximity to so many great things the city of Sam Point has to offer from this property in the urban environment is one of the things that we love about Sam Point. We feel close to everything from here. Um. From section three, under a multimodal town, quote, a multimodal town. Uh, Sam Point is a town that values multimodal transportation. The community's transportation investments and decisions give full consideration to improving the pedestrian experience. And elects to grow in ways that support the ability to shop, recreate, travel and commute on foot. Sam Point residents envision bike paths, good sidewalks, safe lighting, street trees, canopies and awnings in downtown areas, benches, Walmart, crosswalks. Slower-paced, efficient traffic in walkable neighborhoods throughout the city, end quote. My response is I'm not sure if the Dover Sam Point or Sam Point Dover Trail was built when the study was completed in two thousand nine. However. It's very relative to this property with its accessibility for multimodal travel. Whether it's by foot or by bike, it's easy to leave a car behind and get anywhere one would need to. Uh, also in section three, under diverse housing for a diverse diverse community. Quote, in recent times, Sam Point's fortunes have spurred growth and investment in such a way as to. Compromise affordability. To combat this, residents have become more proactive in a role for themselves and for the city in promoting and encouraging a wide range of housing types. Keeping pace with housing demand and acting to improve other livability factors to bridge the distance between costs of living in Sam Point with what residents earn, end quote. We really feel that this property is a creative way to expand the raise range of housing types in Sam Point while keeping pace with housing demand and improving livability factors such as the proximity to the urban environment. And encouragement of the multimodal transportation with the proximity to the trail. Also in section three under mixed use options, quote, one way in which Sam Point addresses affordability is by promoting mixed use development. Reviving the traditional, reviving the traditional and beneficial adjacencies of varied residential and business uses. This approach once common of typicals. Common and typical of cities is recognized by residents as an important way to foster walkability, make efficient use of infrastructure. Improve safety, add personal convenience, improve social networks and enhance civic character, end quote. And my response is this is elaborating off the previous paragraph above and providing examples as to why this property provides a good mixed use option for Sam Point. Um, furthermore, in section three, under beauty and character, quote, residents of Sam Point appreciate the town's natural setting. They also love the overall beauty and character of the town's built environment. Residents respect the work, investment and commitment by past generations to establish establish that character and recognize the need to maintain the town's built legacy. Current residents of Sam Point wish to add to the built environment in a way that is equal to or better than past works. Insisting that new additions harmonize with town's character and contribute to the long-term success of the city, end quote. And since my wife and I have purchased this property and made the improvements we have made and received or or. I'm sorry. Since we purchased the property and made the improvements we have made, we've received numerous compliments from Sam Point residents as to how beautiful it looks, especially regarding what it looked like for years prior to us taking position. Possession. And it feels good to receive the feedback from the community, and it also feels good to know that our improvements have been well received and. Um, outside of my response, I just the the work the Stevenson's have done to. Their property as well is amazing, and they're always out there. Fine tuning everything and they just do a beautiful job out there and they're really inspiring to be next to. Um. Back to my response, uh, parking under commercial C zoning has been a challenge for the site, and I believe that we need five to seven spaces to be in compliance with the. Commercial C occupancy permit, which the current, under the current zoning has us potentially eliminating an entire building in order to make accommodations for parking. Uh, under section three dash six, shopping and commerce, parking. Quote, improve parking commis- conditions are recognized as key to the community's success. The town is committed to applying creative. Cost-effective methods to address public parking needs while per. Or in the urban environment, end quote. Um, and only, I don't know how really cost effective that is in this case, when it's eliminating a housing option for somebody. Um, and then again, this this is Joe, Joe Resonant Sandpoint trying to under. And so. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me. Um. Design directives under section three dash seven states that quote, based on community discussion in the evolution of the plan's vision, these directives reflect the community's desire to. Term for outward expansion into the area of city impact or A C I. To provide for more compact pattern of land development within city limits, to provide public services at a level that's both sustainable and consistent with community demand, end quote. And with the zoning change. Can mix use residential outward expansion for future residential units is tempered. Um, because the land development pattern is kept within this area where we are. Um, with with uh, public services and everything already available, that nothing needs to be added to. Um, section three eight regarding direct growth into downtown standpoint, quote, as population growth occurs. Standpoint residents wish to resist the temptation to push that growth into the area of city impact again, the A C I. Instead, the directive here is to focus a large share of that growth into the communities downtown and other designated higher intensity districts. This will take advantage of the population influx to stimulate reinvestment in these areas, creating exciting community centers where people can live, workshop, meet and mingle, end quote. And I would say that this has been a big reinvestment in this area with this property. We brought life to this corner again. And made it significantly more appealing visually while contributing to creating an exciting community center for people to enjoy life in. Um, section three nine, goal one, policies A and B. Uh, policy A, quote, to ensure that all commercial, single and multifamily development respects the town's unique historic character and architecture density and in-site planning. And B to facilitate reinvestment in an adaptive reuse of historic structures, districts and neighborhoods, end quote. Um, revisioning, revisioning this corner has been in, I believe. Compliance with these policy goals for Sam Point, and they maintain everything historic about this property while investing in this area. None of these buildings. Don't carry a historic designation, um, but they've been the same structurally for years, and we're happy to preserve that and to also reinvest our efforts into the property to make it more beautiful. Section three dash nine, goal two, uh, policy C, quote, to encourage mixed use in C A four and C A five areas. Uh, end quote, um, being in C A four, we understand the encouragement for mixed use. Uh, mixed use residential being what we're after, of course. Section three dash nine, goal three, quality growth, uh, quote. See. In higher density areas, locate buildings to emphasize the relationship to the street, encourage pedestrian access and establish identities of individual districts in mixed use neighborhoods. Uh, D. Design and work toward making multimodal travel safe, efficient and connected, end quote. Um, I feel that repurposing this as a mixed use residential property goes hand in hand with multiple travel, and this is a great example in use of this property. In section four dash five regarding the C A four definition, quote, C A four areas are intended as vibrant secondary secondary centers of commercial office and residential development, serving as neighborhood hubs for residents in neighboring C A three and C A two districts. Believe Sarah read this already in the intro as well. Um. Personally, I certainly agree with this. I'm not an expert in the comp plan by any means again. But uh, after reading the comp plan and understanding where we can apply the comp plan to our property, I feel that this really fits well with with the comp plan. Um. Moving on to goal L U dash one, efficient land use, A. Uh, quote, encourage increased density in C A three and C A four areas while requiring multifamily housing to respect neighborhood character, end quote. Uh, whether it's mixed use residential multifamily, um, as a mixed use residential property, this is both increasing to the end respecting neighborhood character. Um, I'm only, I'm almost done. I only have like fifteen more pages to read to you guys, okay? Um, that's a joke, by the way. I'm on my last page. Uh, goal L U two.
We do have the letter and we have had the opportunity to read it, so I'm not sure that reading through every single thing is necessary.
Okay, cool. Well, then I just, I'll pick my favorite. Part for last then, um. Under section five, housing conditions, quote, standpoint as a variety of housing choices for his residents, but among most neighborhoods. Historic and new, single-family housing is the most prevalent housing choice. Um, and I thought that was, that was like a good part of the comp plan where we can apply what we're after to this property, um, still. Maintaining, I guess, a a commercial type designation, but being allowed to have single-family housing there as well, so. Um, I guess that concludes my reading my letter to you guys again that you have already read, but uh, I appreciate you listening and. Uh. I guess I, what do I say when I'm done? I'm finished. Thank you very.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much, and we still are having some technical difficulties, but it is getting better.
Um, okay. Thank you for the feedback.
Good. So at this time, it would be uh appropriate for the commissioners if they have any questions of the applicant. Before we proceed to the public hearing.
Yeah, Mister Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Mister.
Uh, John's Commissioner Man, um, so. What what is the intent uh with the mixed use? If you if you do get the rezoning approved. Is there, are you intending to uh do? What are you intending to do with that? Rezone. Are you going to take down structures and remodel? Are you going to?
No. No, we keep, we we intend to keep everything as is. Yeah. It's one. On uh. Uh, approval that it's okay to have single-family housing there.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Mister.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mister Simmons.
Um, hey, John, yeah, so uh, same thing with the Stevenson's, if you know, I mean, is it, is it still uh, keep everything sort of as is with with um, the homes and not change any structures?
Absolutely. I believe, I believe the Stevenson's are there and I'm and they'll probably comment on that.
Hi.
Further, but um, between, are you waving to them? Yeah, cool. Yes, the. The same with them as well.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Fine. Well, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Mister Chair.
Go. Uh, Commissioner Cap was gonna ask a question now.
Okay.
I just have a question for Mister Satterberg, uh, if I got that right, on owner occupancy, will that be your primary residence?
Uh, we we aim for that, yeah.
Right. Uh, Commissioner Boyd.
Yes, um, so just to clarify, so you're looking at uh, seven, ten Pine Street, one oh one and one oh three. Uh, North Boyer as single-family residencies? Correct?
Uh. Well, yeah, but with with the options, so like, I guess. Immediately if we intend to live in um, any of those, great, but say we were to move out and a business wanted to move in. I mean, for having that option still too, I think is. Kind of what we're after too. But yes, being able to live in there hundred percent is the is the front of the application.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this is Chairman Hastings, and I have a a question for you as well. Uh, I'd asked it earlier, but um, the two lots on that block that are not part of the rezone. Were they contacted, not interested, or or why are they? Why is not the whole block part of this rezone? Request.
Well, I. I personally spoke. Or my wife and I spoke with the gentleman at Kodiak Sign, Dave and Carl, and they said if they needed to be on the application for support for us, they would do it. Um, and then the Stevenson's and I and us just decided to proceed. We said, well, we'll fill out the application and. And go for it. Um, but if if they needed to be on it, we could probably pull them into it, and they would be happy to comply. And then uh, I believe the Stevenson spoke with the other lot, so I'll I'll let them comment on that.
Okay. And and.
Uh, that that would be, that would be, I spoke with lot fourteen and they spoke with lot thirteen. If you're looking at the map.
And then I have uh, one other question too, and that is, is is there currently a fully functional alley uh on this block?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Another question, Mister Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Boyd.
So there's um, parking, there used to be parking access through that alley, correct?
Uh, is that question for me?
Yes.
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure what the parking access was through that alley. I know. That uh, when we purchased the property in March of two thousand twenty-one, there was. Only really one parking spot to. The north of the parish house, which is borders the alley, uh, the off Pine Street, and then um. Once we. Got possession of the property, we created two more spaces behind that parish house. So there's three total now. Um, but I don't know what it was like for one oh one and one oh three North Boyer in the back of the alley. Um. The Stevenson's, they they would. They would have a better idea. They would know like what the parking situation was like behind the former Pine Street Bakery.
So as of now, there's only three parking spaces, the two that you created into the the one, um, in addition to the one that was already there.
Yeah, for one oh one and one oh three.
One oh three.
For that part of it, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And so that was, I mean, that was tough for us trying to figure that out if. He, I don't know, like. If you put parking spaces on this, the south side of the building, which is right on Pine Street or what, there's a telephone pole there that was just replaced. There's a spot bus stop. I mean, it's. There's just a lot of uh. We found a lot of difficulty with trying to figure out the parking situation on the site.
Commissioners, do we have any more questions for the applicant? Before we open the public hearing? If not, I will now recite the uh, rules for the public hearing and procedures. Please note that as provided in the public, uh, notice of public hearing and as stated within the meeting packet posted at the city website. All written comments are to be delivered to the city clerk. Those comments that were received by way of that stated procedure were either included in the meeting packet. Or if received prior to the meeting, were forwarded to the commissioners. This process must be followed to ensure comments are properly included in the permanent hearing record. I would like to ask for your attention at this time, uh, as I recite the standards for public testimony during this evening's public hearing. Testimony shall directly address the subject at hand. Testimony shall not be personally derogatory toward any individual, organization or business. Public comment opportunities are for comment only. Do not direct any questions to the commission or to staff. In the interest of time, testimony shall not be repetitious, and each speaker is allowed no more than three minutes. If your testimony fails to comply with these standards, it may be declared out of order and you will be asked to cease. Those here in the chambers who wish to speak will need to complete a sign-up form and hand it to the clerk. Do not approach the dais. The forms are available on the table by the door. Those on Zoom, you will also have the opportunity to speak. Those in attendance are not to disrupt the meeting. Or the business at hand that is being taken up by the commission. Disruptive behavior, including clapping, loud noises, comments, exclamations from the audience. We will now proceed with the public hearing. For those of you participating on Zoom, when your name is called. You will see a prompt on your screen asking whether you would like to unmute, and then you'll need to unmute yourself in order to be heard. The clerk will now lower all hands on Zoom in order to take testimony in the order previously stated. If you wish to speak in favor. Or a neutral or are in opposition, I will make a call for each of these, and then you may raise your hand at that time. Just a reminder that in the interest of time, please do not repeat prior comments made by others, but simply state your support for those comments that have already been made. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes. The public hearing is now open. Beginning with those in the room, uh, is there anyone who would like to testify in favor?
Mister Chair, there is no one that has signed up to testify.
Do you want to quickly sign up?
I don't have to. I'm an applicant.
Or you, you are on the applicant. I mean, you're, oh, okay, we probably should actually proceed then. I thought you were here as testimony. I was not informed that that was part of, that you were part of the application. My mistake. Okay, uh, so counsel and or city. Counsel and/or city staff, please advise me, um, can they participate, uh, at this point? By speaking in favor of this when they are in fact applicants?
Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, Andy Doman, counsel for the city. Um, if there is another applicant there. Uh, they should be given an opportunity to also address the, uh, commission with respect to the application. And then I would suggest that we then, uh, go back and consider any other public. Testimony from someone in either present or available by Zoom.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So we are kind of suspending the public hearing to hear more from the other half of this application. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Harold Stevenson, representing seven ten Pine, which is our address. Um, we own and have own Paint Bucket and Pine Street Bakery since the early nineties. We pay a lot of pride in what we do.
Our area, we went to the beautiful. Asking for this zone change. Let's just do that because it would give us a chance to live in that house. That we fixed up. It was. Commercial for a few years as both restaurant. And a bakery, it kind of outlived its usefulness. It's gotten really old. It needs a lot of work. It was to the point of. Either tear it down, build something else there, or try to restore what's there. My wife and I decided that it would make more sense. To try to fix it, to restore it to what it was. It has a lot of meaning to my wife because her sister lived there in the seventies. That was her house. Uh, one of our last state senators also grew up in that house. And Liz's folks live just down the block, so that, that part of Pine Street means a lot to us. And so if you look at what's there, you look what we've done, you've got the pictures. We've tried to take a lot of pride of what we do. So our Paint Bucket store, we've always kept it. Unique. We have a nice yard, a nice building, well-painted decorative, because we have fun at what we do. When we decided to fix up the bakery, we tried to restore it to the state that it was. Back of the turn of the century. The city has building permits to show that mechanical permits were drawn on that building. I believe in about eighteen ninety-nine, so it goes way back. When we pulled some of the freeze boards off the front of the building. To work on them, they were dated April twenty-fourth, oh eight, which we can only assume was nineteen oh eight because. That they're long before two thousand and eight. So there's a lot of historical character in that building, plus it was a well-designed building, has good bones. Well worth preserving, so we couldn't see tearing it down. And so I want to make another point. Uh, sorry about this. This is good, my first point. One of the comments that we've noticed noted about people who've talked to us about what's going on is. Why would you want to take the nice block and turn it into ten lots and put ten little narrow houses there? And Highway District also made that comment that too much buildup in that area would be problematic. And so we want to assure you folks and anybody else that's interested is, what you see is what you've got. That we're not intending on changing anything except finishing what we've started. The garden's gonna. Grow and develop and be better. There are parts of the house that we're working on now that will be fully restored. Hopefully, when we retire again from the Paint Bucket and can go back to work. On the house. So we want it to be a, a feature of people who are headed down Pine Street. So it looks nice. It doesn't add an impact. To the street. So we live there or worked at this store since the nineties. We know what a problem parking is in that area. We were. Basic were only businesses that had off-street parking. On it. And everybody else had to fight for parking spaces. So by removing some commercial impacts. On that area, it's gonna help all the pre-existing businesses. There we have a nursery now across the street, long shot. Should be back in operation as something, so they're gonna need. Parking, and so people aren't gonna fight for spots, or they're not gonna take spots away from. The parking lot that's at the Paint Bucket. Now. Uh, so it just is a total benefit. Uh, because it's an attractive area, we have. Seeding and a courtyard at the paint store. We also allow people to go through the gardens. At seven ten Pine Street because my wife. Takes great pride in it and she'll pull people off the sidewalk to walk them through and show them the plants because we have a lot of specialty plants, a lot of native plants. And so we're proud of, of what we've turned that. Into, those who you've been around a while have probably noticed the building looks just a little bit nicer, a little bit straighter. Um, little better finish than it did. So we're trying to take it back to what it was in the early nineteen hundreds. There's no intent. To tear anything down, put a bunch of little houses. There, it's too beautiful an area. It's too close to a major intersection to want to have additional housing. That's about all, just the, the alley. So there is a functional, you asked that. There's a functional alley because we maintain it, that we buy the gravel, we grade. Grade it because we have parking behind seven ten Pine Street. We also have access to the paint store. So it's important to us that that alley be maintained, gravel graded. And. The snow removed. So we've taken that responsibility since the city no longer. Maintains alleys, commercial or residential. Alleys. But. That's about it.
Okay, let me remain there for a second. Uh, Commissioners, do we have any questions for our second applicant here? Okay, thank you very much. You bet. So we will now resume the public hearing. Oh. As an applicant, you certainly may. I, yep, my apologies. Here we go. No, 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 that's okay. I was not informed.
Hey, my family's been associated with those two properties since the early seventies. And that place is home for me. I mean, I can tell you about weddings. And you can all come sit on the front porch with me, and I can tell you about Mr. Timlick, that was the mailman of Sandpoint, that where he hung his nail bag on the porch. I, I'll get too emotional here, but I'm telling you, that's property is home. And, and we intend to make it beautiful or keep it beautiful, and we've worked. Since we've owned it in the nineties, we've worked really hard because I'm proud to live in Sandpoint, Idaho. And I want to thank all of you for tonight. For considering that we can have it as a home. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes.
If I could just add, I. I live on Downstreet and, um, since I've moved, I've noticed on, I live on South Boyer now, but. I've noticed the work that's been done on, um, especially the former Pine Street Bakery. And I've admired the garden for years while I would take my dog for a walk in the neighborhood. So I really truly appreciate. The Stevenson's and the work that you've done, and I've enjoyed watching the progress on the, um, former bakery. That's it.
Thank you. Um, okay, so we will proceed now with the public hearing. I see no other, uh, folks in the, uh, um, chambers this evening. Do we have people on Zoom who wish to testify?
No, Mr. Chair, there is no members from the public attending via Zoom.
Okay. Um. So then we can proceed through a lot of this. And I will just do the final bit here. Is there anybody that I'm not seeing? On Zoom or here who would like the opportunity to speak? Okay, just wanted to make sure I had all my bases covered and save a little time there. So, uh, with no public testimony that was given, then the applicants, there's no need for rebuttal. Um, and before I close the public hearing, uh, do commissioners have any final questions for any of the applicants?
I do not.
No, no.
Seeing none, uh, the public hearing is now closed, and at this time, the commission will deliberate. No new information may be provided, and questions may be directed only to city staff during deliberations. Do the commissioners have questions for staff at this time? I'll start us out. Well, you can think, it looks like maybe you're getting ready. So, um. If it's currently commercial, but there's single-family homes there, did they, um, were those homes there before it was zoned commercial? Do we know? Is that why it is the way it is?
Correct.
Okay.
I believe, yeah, some structures are non-conforming today because.
Correct.
Commercial.
Yeah. Gotcha. And they, and they probably were built before we had zoning. Is that accurate?
Like. Maybe.
Yep. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes.
With, uh, um. If, if approval, I just want to make sure that the, the multi-use residential won't. There's, there won't be any changes to how the Paint Bucket itself has to operate, right? In terms of. Commercial building with business use, two stories. Correct. Okay, thank you.
The, um. As far as the deliberations, um. Were, oh, were you gonna say something?
My question was answered.
Okay. Got you. Uh, I, you know, one of the, uh, um, points of fact that we're supposed to find out here tonight, uh. Would this comply with what we're looking at for land use planning? Um, and when we've looked at the kinds of, uh, current land use plans and what's projected to be coming. And because of its location on two major transportation corridors. Uh, I would certainly tend to be of the opinion that it does, um, fall within what we're going to be seeing as land use in that area. That's my thoughts. Any?
Mr. Chairman, I would agree.
Oh, go ahead, please.
I would agree with that statement.
Thank you.
Of what we've been researching in a way that I interpret our comprehensive plan. And what those definitions will be.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, and looking at the, the older map. From the comp plan, that this was. An area of, I think it was neighborhood mixed use. For that block on the comp plan itself, which I would argue this probably keeps with, right? You've got. Couple lovely homes there that are well-maintained, that are single-family residences, and what's not to love? Um, and it's a transitional into a very nice neighborhood just to the north. And you've got commercial just to the south, you know, we'd be having a different conversation if this was a block south, but it's not. It's in that. Sort of, I'll call it tweener state. So that's sort of my two cents.
And it, um, two things are going through my mind along that one is that, um. Looking at what we're talking about with the rezone and comparing that to the intended use of the rezone. Quite honestly, I would be more excited if the rezone was going to be offering higher density housing, which it's not. Um, it's just to try and make a current use.
Compliant.
Complying.
Yeah.
But, um, but irregardless of current use and intended use. Uh, I'm thinking that, that, um, this kind of rezone would in fact be something beneficial. But again, uh, it. I see it beneficial in that it would be in. Increased housing density, but that may not be the intent of the current owners, but I don't necessarily see that's. Our job to.
Within a reason. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, to, to make, to make that part of our, but. Just looking at the rezone without intended use or current use, does it seem to make sense? But. More deliberations from the commission? No. No. Um, I see a slight problem here for us, uh, citizen volunteers here. Um, my paperwork has no proposed. Um, do you have proposed? Because I did not get those. Oh, good. So we don't have to wing it. We don't have to wing it.
I'll make a motion. To approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and we'll have a roll call on that.
Um, I need to read.
Oh, yes, yes, you do need to read.
Okay. I move that the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho code and Sandpoint City Code. Recommend approval of the request to city council by John Satterberg, Brandy Hovey, and Harold and Liz Stevenson. For a zone change for, from commercial seating. To mixed-use residential. On the properties known as seven ten and seven fourteen Pine Streets. And one oh one and one oh three North Boyer Avenue. Parcel IDs RPS zero five zero zero five four zero two two A A. And RPS. Zero five zero 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 five four zero one eight. A A. RPS zero five zero 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 five four zero one five A A. And legally described as lots fifteen through twenty-four of block fifty-four of West End Edition E, section twenty-two. Township fifty-seven North Range Two West, records of Bonner County. The recommendation is based on the findings that. One, the proposed zone change is in conformance with the future land use map and other policies with comprehensive plan. Two, the proposed mixed-use residential zone. As submitted. Is consistent and compatible with existing zoning and future land use, uses in the vicinity, vicinity of the site. Three, particular consideration has been given to the effects of this proposed zone change upon the delivery of services by any political subdivision providing. Public services with the planning jurisdiction. Four, staff has followed the notice procedures applicable to zone changes contained in Idaho code. Sixty-seven dash sixty-five eleven and Sandpoint City Code Title Nine, Chapter Nine.
Thank you. So we have the motion. We've had the second.
Second.
Thank you. And, uh, we will have our, we'll call vote. Commissioner Simmons?
I vote in favor.
Uh, McGrann?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
I will also vote in favor. Mr. Benner?
Yes.
And Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Excellent motion passes unanimously, and thank you to the applicants for your time this evening.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you. Alrighty. The next item on the agenda this evening is discussion of the comprehensive plan timeline, and I will now yield the floor to city planner, Amy Twetton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, in your agenda materials, um, I had included information on. Where we go from here, um, the commission has been working kind of chapter by chapter for the past almost eight months. Um, so we're to the point of trying to incorporate all of those chapters into a document. Um. And. Working with, um, Miriam at. Uh, Logan Simpson, we've been trying to come up with a timeline moving forward. Um, I had reached out to commissioners and it sounds like we would. Have a quorum to move the meeting from the twenty-first to the twenty-eighth. And that will allow us to do a workshop for the planning commission. Uh, with Miriam. Um, she would be remote, but we would be, it would be looking at. The document as a whole, more than just chapter by chapter. There are still some pieces that we need additional work on. At that point, we probably won't have a complete. Appendix of implementation, but we'll have a good idea of where the implementation appendix and all the actions are. Um, and then also. Um, the ACI and whether we are, um. Going to move forward with. Using the current ACI and a discussion of a proposed. Amended border, um, and then moving forward after adoption of the plan to negotiation with the county for the formal change of that.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, just.
Yes.
One, one question. Is that, does that mean change literally the borders of that impacted area? Is that what's?
Right, of that area of city impact, correct.
Okay, got it, understood.
Uh.
And a follow-up question to that. We can change what we see to be that ACI.
Yeah, okay.
Before we begin the discussions with the county, is that correct? We just, this is where we would like it to be?
I think essentially the interim step, and again. This isn't, uh, hasn't been decided yet, but an interim step would be to have the current ACI as. Currently adopted. And then show kind of a. A line of where we would anticipate.
Impact.
The ACI moving based on, um.
Projected.
The fact that the ACI is supposed to be where we could conceivably grow within the next ten years.
Where we could provide service.
Right. Um, and then the next step would be actually starting the, the formal process of negotiation with the county.
Gotcha. Thank you.
That, what that would allow us to do, that two-step process would be to move forward with. The comprehensive. That what that would allow us to do, that two-step process would be to move forward with the comprehensive plan. Because the the, um. Process of amending that ACI will be a several month process and. Otherwise, we will be holding up the remainder of the plan for amending that. So that is. One way to keep us moving forward knowing and then having as actual action items in the plan. To renegotiate. Um, and then also have come up with a subarea plan for that area. So it's a little more. Um, known down the road, what will the land uses be in that area? Uh, where will the transportation corridor and utility corridors be?
And may I ask a question? Um, and so city staff, I'm I'm guessing has already been involved. I mean, has already been looking at all that and they know where will be easiest to extend those utility quarters, et cetera.
Right, we have a good idea. Us mainly based on where, uh, utilities could feasibly be served. Is the the main driver of. Where the ACI boundary could be.
Gotcha. And do we get neighborhoods requesting? Uh, that, you know, that are currently not in city city limits. Do we get neighborhoods that are requesting us to extend services?
We get requests, um. For extension of utilities outside the city, yes. Uh, so just, I just wanted in case the commission hadn't had a chance to. To see where on the city website, um, the update. Is and the chapters that have been reviewed. So if you go to the homepage. There's a few couple ways you can get to it, but the fastest way is to go to master plans on the left-hand side. And then. There's the current and the comprehensive current comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan update. And then the two tabs at the top, the introduction gives a lot of the background of the plan. Um, this is a. A graphic that you have seen before. We've adjusted it over time, kind of originally it was. I think March. Of twenty-three was our goal. Um, we've always said spring of. Of twenty-three, so, um. Getting it into June, which is still aggressive, but, um. Potential, uh, we would still be within our targeted, uh, spring of twenty-three completion. And then again, over the past year. Uh, it was starting with the work that had been completed before there was a pause. Um, and then reaffirming what the the vision and all the previous engagement. Um, had brought forward. Uh, then doing the housing and neighborhoods workshop and survey. Uh, and then also that Leland report for the, uh, economic data was completed. So then the, um, commission has been going through draft chapters and. Um, we are hoping by the end of March that have a draft pulled together. It won't be final, but it will be. A document that incorporates everything done to date. Um, and then at that point, we'll start the review of the draft document. Um, as I said, there'll be a workshop on March twenty-eighth with commission. Um, we're also going to schedule a workshop with city council. Hopeful that that can occur in April, but they. They have a very tight, they have a lot on their. Um, so getting on their schedule is, um. The next step. Uh, of in terms of. That day and then doing a public workshop. Uh, we'd probably do two workshops in a day that would be at the end of April. Um, and then. Depending on how all of that goes and if there's major changes or not. Um, then we start the official public hearing process and possible adoption. So.
Question for you?
Yeah.
Um, what do you envision as being the, uh, time gap between? Public hearing and final adoption? I mean, how much? How much change to this document might we expect after we get more direct input from the public on its final draft?
Um, I would anticipate during the workshops, we may get change, but. I'm hopeful by the time we get to a public hearing.
We're pretty well set.
There wouldn't be significant changes.
Thank you.
Um, so that that is where we are, um. And then. I guess at this point, if the commission has any questions, um.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
What what form do the workshops normally take? Is that like weekday for two hours with public notice?
Right.
Sort of thing?
Well, the, uh, workshops with the commission will be here. Miriam will actually be remote for those. But for the public workshops, we will likely be outside of city hall. We'll have a. Potentially an afternoon and an evening.
Gotcha.
Um, workshop where the all the information will be, we'll have boards, we'll probably have presentations.
How 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 well are those normally attended? Spotty?
How well are they?
Attended.
Attended?
Yeah.
Um, so far the workshops, the workshops that we did for housing, um, and neighborhoods were not well attended.
Well, is that like twenty, twenty people, ten?
Uh, that one, between the two, we had thirty-five, forty people.
And and if I might interject, even when we have. Perhaps I might use the word contentious or at least more concerned citizens.
Yeah.
At some of these meetings, I mean, if we get fifty people, that's a big crowd.
Yeah.
So, um, bottom line, it's a relatively small percentage of the electorate.
Yeah.
Shows up, but you get you get what you get.
Totally understand. I just, yeah, I have no sense of what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not like we're gonna fifty percent of the electorate showing up to give us their opinion, and that's probably good.
You wouldn't want it.
But we, we will try and do it. A better job of promotion for these, um. We got, we got a little close on time when we were doing the neighborhood. But again, we were really thinking this is something people have been talking about housing and. Need for housing and need for housing. We thought we would just. Everyone would want to attend, but.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Amy, is there, is there any way that we can find a better location? I mean, somewhere where there's, um. I don't know if a school or perhaps the library or someplace where we can. We're kind of in the middle of neighborhoods, um, where people have, you know, better access. The old town hall or the old meeting. Place down there on First Ave. You know, the the parking's kind of, you know, it's just not a great central area, and I know you guys wanted to keep. Limited stuff out of city hall or, you know, minimal or just to be out there going to the people. Is there any way? That that kind of venue like a school or the library or someplace where it's. You know, better accessible by neighborhoods and families possibly?
Yeah.
Is that?
Definitely what we're gonna look into.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
I have a question for staff on the document drafting. So if you're in the process of having workshops, you go to document drafting. And then there was the talk about. Change or revision in the final. Meeting. Wouldn't. What would force a change in the final? I'm having a hard time understanding that if. The participants were active in the, um, meetings prior to the closure period.
Um, as I said, by the time it gets to public hearing. I don't necessarily think there would be. Major changes.
Okay.
But, I mean, it it could happen, but. If there was some, is there, if there's something major missing, um. I would think it would come out either at the commission level or at the public workshops. And in addition, um, back to the website, so that first. Um, as I indicated, that first. Tab is, uh, the introduction gives a lot of the background information, past engagement summaries. Then all the chapters in their current, once they went to the planning and zoning commission, they are all here as well. So these are all. The chapters that have received first. Review. Some of them, um, you'll see the markups and some of them, the markups have just been incorporated. But, you know, the information is out, we we need to do a better job of of probably. Letting people know all this information is there, um. And that, you know, they they can provide comment at any time. They can reach out and say. You know, this is something that I think is important to include in the comprehensive plan.
If I may, I think it would be a grand idea, um, if on the landing page for city government. There was a one button, so it's not multiple clicks, it's one click. Here's the new plan. Please check it out and comment. Rather than have to navigate through a menu, but just a little box, first click and you're at this page.
Right, and and we will, so once after, um, the commission has its workshop. Our hope is to have that doc, that draft document. In one. One piece versus separate chapters, so that will be the time. We'll then have the public comment period run from that point all the way through to the public workshops. Um. Where it'll be more interactive.
And is the, um. The protocol is that, uh, we would recommend to the city council for passage.
Correct.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, do we have any other questions or points of business?
No, thank you for outlining the next steps on the comprehensive plan, because it's come, something that was in the back of my mind. I've been working on this for a while. It'd be good to know. When we're going to be able to get to the finish line.
You're a newbie. What are you talking about?
Yeah, well, and it sounds like. It sounds like the city council is going to be the long pole. I mean, getting it on their rigos.
I do have a question.
Yeah, so we're shooting generally to have it wrapped up kind of by June with public input.
Okay.
June, July.
That is our hope.
Yeah, cool. Super cool.
And then, Commissioner, could we hear a little bit about our new member here?
Yeah.
Oh, would you like to introduce yourselves to us a little bit further?
What you want to hear?
A little bit about yourself.
Way better and, uh. Uh, I've been around Bonner County since seventy-four. And actually a homeowner in Sandpoint since two thousand and ten. And was a past county commissioner for six years. Uh, worked with, uh, Schweitzer, uh, through their master plan, uh, updating and. Corrupt to the time of the bankruptcy and then helped them through that process and then went to Stone Ridge to help them through bankruptcy process. So I got a lot of. History on bankruptcies. And legal issues.
Yeah.
And then I went to, uh, Southeast Alaska to be a city administrator for, uh, ten years. And then came back here to retire, but couldn't retire.
I know, I know the feeling. I know the feeling. Well, welcome and thank you very much.
There's a lot more to it all the way through, but I won't go into. Hours of details.
Thank you, welcome.
And and I'll throw it out here. It's not actually on the agenda, but, uh, well, is that okay if I throw that out there? It's not on the agenda. We kind of had started that commissioner forum, round. Uh, round table thing. If there was anything anybody wanted to bring up. For future meetings, so this is nothing we would deliberate on in any way, shape or form now, but is there something that anybody feels we should? Get on our agendas for for future meetings? And does your comment relate to that at all?
I was just wondering what's going on with staff here.
We're just trying to shake things. Uh, if this was just an opportunity to have Sarah present to you. Um, and because there's limited people that know how to run the technology.
Well, you both did great.
Big guns.
And the ones who knew how to run it couldn't be here tonight, so. No. Sorry, that was cruel. Retract that from.
I just did want to point out that I put in front of you. There was, uh, when I did the presentation on planning and zoning and building permits. Um, and then after that. Did the same for city council. This chart is slightly different than the building permits that you received.
Okay.
Because upon further review, there were some permits that had not been counted. Um, so it, I think the last one, the the. Last quarter was slightly below, uh, the previous year, but it it was higher.
But the trend's the trend. I mean, yeah, yeah. Gotcha.
And I think it's worth noting that Gonzaga is ahead thirty-seven to nineteen at the half. Want to know?
I just had a. I just had a question for Amanda. Mr. Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes.
I just have a question for Amanda. I didn't realize that she was there. Amanda, are you there?
Yes, I am.
How's my girl?
I knew that was coming. Doing just fine.
Great, thank you.
I will just make one. Okay, go ahead.
Why, just. Mr. Chair, I believe it's the next city council meeting. They're going to be having a presentation on the transportation. It's the. Plan by the engineers.
Yep. Okay.
So.
Sounds good.
Tomorrow, no, next Wednesday.
No, next Wednesday.
Yep, tomorrow. And one thing I'll mention, just because we have some new folks here, just be sure, if you're like me and all this paper that's here, you've been writing notes on it, just be sure you take it with you. Um, anything that's behind, it becomes public record and we'd rather not have to deal with that. Alrighty, um, well, with though for the business and thank you all for being here this evening. And this meeting is now adjourned. At six fifty-seven.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I'll see y'all next month.
Yes.
Have fun.
Yep, thanks, guys.